I call the order. This is a special meeting and work session. The special meeting is for one item. Need a, uh, approval of the agenda as presented. Second, on the record.
Yes.
Okay. We're right into the first item. Public hearing and consideration of PCC 1601. Uh, this is a hearing regarding the appeal requested by Tomlin Architects by the planning commission's decision to deny SR 1505, Fred and Margot Sylvester's application for a setback reduction at 1509 Center Street. The council shall first decide whether this appeal shall be heard on the record or de novo. A de novo hearing allows the parties to present evidence to the city council that has not, that was not presented at the planning commission. An on the record hearing is restricted to the evidence that the planning commission heard. The applicant has requested a de novo hearing. The relevant factors for considering the type of hearing are in Canada, Minnesota, 1788 18 through A, A reproduced at the top of the page, the staff report. Also, we have a letter that was arrived where the, Mr. Burton has asked him that if we do do a de novo, that it could be postponed and spelled kind of regular, would you correct?
Yeah, that's, that's part of that mail that's put in front of you. We just received this very shortly before the hearing started. If you do continue this hearing, um, you decide to do it to a time of day search, your first meeting in May would be the obvious choice, so I'd just like to know you're running up, we aren't out of time on 120 day clock, we're nearing the end, and there certainly would be no room for further continuance and possibly even no room for you to develop findings or anything like that if you needed to. So, um, you're under no obligation to, um, honor that request for continuance, Mr. Burton, or, um, Mr. Palmer actually requested a continuance of the first hearing, and it was granted by the planning commission, and the first evidentiary hearing is obligated to grant that kind of request. This is not the first hearing, you're not under any obligation to grant that request.
Okay. So, when it's, uh, is there a, I don't require a motion, but, uh, I recommend that we not conduct a de novo meeting, I think the record is already complete, and I feel it's necessary to take additions at this point. Are you ready, Fred?
I agree.
We're adjourned, we're ready to continue on the hearing.
So, it's gonna be an on the record hearing?
On the record hearing.
Um, since I was the only, well, I, at this end of the room, I'm the only one who was actually at the planning commission meeting, and if you'll let me out, wave my hands wildly if I hear any witnesses test, trying to topics that were not presented to the planning commission. Otherwise, you just have to filter it through what you know of the record from reading this material.
Okay. So, open the public hearing. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this appeal at this time? Does any council believe here she had a personal bias to declare? Does any council believe here she has a conflict of interest?
No.
Has any council had any expertise contacts or made a site visit? I have made a site visit.
Site visit.
I'm gonna say a visit.
Site visit.
And, do you have any additional correspondence? Is this correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, staff report.
Okay, as you mentioned, this is an appeal from a planning commission denial of a setback reduction. Setback reductions are, um, in many cities like Gareon says, they're handled differently here, but it's, uh, just what said, the reduction of the setback. In this case, the relevant setback is the east side yard setback, the minimum required of the code is five feet. Um, the request was to reduce that to something under two feet, um, for the purposes of building this garage. The planning commission's reasons for denying the request were based on two of the criteria, A three and A four. Those are in the, reproduced in the staff report that you're looking at, also the planning commission staff report and in their findings. Those reasons for denial basically revolve around the buildings being simply too close to each other for, um, for the planning commission to discern that they had that, those criteria, those criteria are in some respects similar, particularly as they're applied to this situation. The parties, the applicants are here tonight, um, you have, uh, an email from, uh, Mr. Palmer who represents Mr. Burton, the property owner to the east. Those are the only parties that spoke at the planning commission hearing, the applicant, the joint property owner, none of the other neighbors spoke or testified in their oral hearing writing. Planning commission's decision on this is memorialized in the minutes and in the findings. The hearing before you is simply to decide whether to uphold or overturn the planning commission's decision. After testimony and you close the hearing, um, if you are going to uphold the planning commission's denial, then you can rely on the planning commission's findings. If you need to expand on those or see them slightly differently but still want to uphold their decision, say so, get it in the minutes, and that will be sufficient. If, on the other hand, you decide to reverse the decision, you should, um, make a tentative decision and have us bring back findings for your consideration that you're meeting in May. That would not be a public hearing, it would simply be adoption of findings, um, because the planning commission's denial findings are good enough by themselves, you can rely on that, but we really don't have approval findings before you at this point.
That's all I have. I'll wait with the staff report, if you have any questions. Questions? Okay, thank you. Call for private testimony. The appeal will be reviewed against criteria in this code chapter 1788 140, request for review of decision, chapter 1788 150, requirements of the request for appeal of the planning commission decision in chapter 764, setback reduction. Pretend the criteria to consider are noted in the staff reports and listed in all the criteria sheets next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan on this proposed, which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Valid to raise and ensure accompanied by testimony, test statements, or evidence sufficient before the decision maker and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue produced, will build based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial preliminary hearing-
You can skip that one, that might, might state, number four is, should've been on the day.
Okay, let's get down. First and two, testifies shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their home name and mailing address in a written or representative capacity, attempt by whom they represent. Testimony is limited to two matters, which were raised in the planning commission hearing in writing or orally. New evidence may not be submitted, nor will it be considered. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
And if I could get your, to sign in on it.
I'm Fred Sylvester. Mr. Venata and I will address this, I thought I would address it initially. I'd like to give you a little background that you gave the planning commission, uh, at the hearing about the property that they were talking about. The, the actual property that we're asking for the setback variance on is tax lot 4400. It's an L-shaped lot, essentially in the middle of the block. If you've been out there, you've seen it. We bought that property in 2013 after having bought the, the house at, on lot 4600 on the corner of Pacific and Center Street in 2011. And we bought the lot 4400, um, in order to retain open space in the neighborhood. And if you've been out there, you've noticed we have done that. In fact, the DiMartini, it's not fair to call it a house, but the, the cabin that was on there was donated to the learn and burn fire department back, almost two years ago now, and burned that dam, and it's since improved the property. Historically, you could see this from the, the record, we provided deeds, but historically, lot 4400 was divided, uh, from lot 4300 and 4301, um, in order for the DiMartinis to build a house on it and have access to it. So, the dogleg that intersects Center Street is the historic access to lot 4400. You can see why, if you look at the topography of the lot, it goes straight up in the back and it's flat, and part of the, the lot in the middle, and the city owns two trees out front that are on about a 10-foot slope that slopes up to the lot. So, it's the only access that the family had for purposes of being able to access that lot and build on it. As I say, we bought the lot so that we could keep it without a building on it. We have used the access for parking, uh, extra parking, because we do have one car garage on the house on 4600. We decided and talked to neighbors who actually live around there and, and frequent the area, we talked about how to make that look better, and we decided it would be best to have a garage space there so that the vehicles, in this case, it's a fishing boat right now, but the vehicles that we would otherwise keep out in the open, in between the lot 4600 and lot 4300, could be kept secure and could, and it could look nicer. So, we worked with Mr. Venata, we designed, um, what we thought was a practical garage. We requested that the planning commission offer, allow us to reduce the setback at the front between the property line and the garage to two and a half feet. And you've got an exhibit. This is illustrative of what we presented at the hearing before the planning commission. On the right, we're looking at what the garage would look like with a variation, moving the garage from a five-foot setback to two and a half foot setback. We did for illustration purposes, show you pictures with the garage at the full five-foot setback. Now, you'll see there's a, an E sticking out of both of these in the line, that represents the shed that is immediately to the east of lot, um, it's on lot 4300 east of the lot, east to the driveway into lot 4400. That, um, is a shed that's built, it's, it's an old garage that's built, almost directly on the property line. Looking at some old pictures, we found an old picture from 1992 that showed a new siding on it, so it's somewhere in the 90s it was built. I think it was mentioned in the planning commission that, uh, Mr. Barnes was unable to find a building permit filed for that. We've seen nothing to indicate that was ever built with any regard to code or with any regard to setback. So, it's sitting right on the property line with the E hanging over. We presented this to the planning commission, and the questions I got were quite curious in the planning commission, because the first question was, why do you store your boat there? I thought that was quite irrelevant for the chair to ask me why I would want to store our boat there, that had nothing to do with what was gonna be done. The second comment that I found quite curious at the planning commission is we had a member of the planning commission say, I don't like that area, I won't drive down that street, it's too steep, all of the houses in that neighborhood are located too close to each other, and I just don't think it's right, it's just too much here, it's just too much. That was the member who made the motion to deny the request. I've practiced law for 33 years. I've tried cases in seven western states in front of juries. I understand a little bit about the adjudicative process, and as an adjudicative body, the planning commission in the two specific areas where it said, first of all, either we didn't meet our burden to establish that we met one of the criteria, or where they decided that even though we met their burden, they had a better idea, and that is to build it somewhere else. In both situations, I look at the adjudicative body and they leave absolutely no objective criteria for you to look at this decision and say what it was based on. The first, um, determination that was made by the planning commission in their finals of fact, and there are only really two that you need to look at, was the determination under 3A, that there was insufficient solar access, and that's what 3A refers to. The planning commission was concerned about the lack of light and air between the two buildings. The applicant offered no testimony addressing this potential problem. Uh, I'm not sure what the problem is. Is it that somehow the wall of that garage needs more light, or it needs more air? I think if you look in context at solar access as the, the heading under three that they relied on, there are some logical ways you could look at making a decision. Does it reduce the amount of light going into someone's windows into someone's house that they need? Does someone have plans to put solar panels on their roof, and does it limit access to the solar panels? But to try and establish some sort of objective standard for this decision saying, essentially, we think it's too close. Well, I can build it, and we did that for illustration purposes, with a five-foot setback. If I build it with a two and a half foot setback, we have to have one hour firewall all the way up the side. If we build it without the variance, we can build it without a firewall. I suggest that you can't look at those two, um, spacings, two and a half and five feet, and to come to a conclusion that there is a material difference in the amount of light and air between the buildings. So, if you're an adjudicative body, you wanna at least have some sort of objective standard on what your decision's based. That standard wasn't based on, on an objective standard. That decision was based on somebody saying, I just don't like that neighborhood and it's too close. And we oughta be able to use the property for the best use, and for us, the best use is to leave mostly open space, and in the traditional access, be able to build a garage with a reasonable frontage area so that we can get vehicles in and out from what is admittedly a very steep street, a nicely paved neighborhood now, and I like that fact. So, I think when you look at the first objection that we said we didn't meet their concerns about the light inherited building, I don't know that that was ever subject of discussion by the planning commission. I know a couple of commissioners said, we just think it's too close, but five feet looks too close to me, and to fall, to put that under the auspices of solar access, I think, is misplaced. The second determination that, that the commission made was that, um, under 4A, we had to meet one criteria in order to be granted the variance. And the one criteria we thought was pretty obvious was, uh, it would permit us to construct on a lot that had an unusual configuration. And they just, the, uh, it's topographical survey, which was submitted, I think we have blown up here. And Dave can give you more information about this, but, um, essentially what you're talking about is, you've got a property line here, you've got the 10-foot access that was originally granted with the land, and what you have here is a big boll where the house was built. It had about, let's see, I want to tighten about 10 feet, so it's got about a 20-foot rail rail side wall here, holding up this part of the hill. The hill all the way up here on the next lot is covered with hill holder, locks in order to hold it up. The trees that I mentioned are out in front, and this is another 10, 10 and a half foot high, um, hill in order to get to the flat, lower flat part of this lot. The upper flat part of this lot ends about here and works its way up. The interesting thing is the planning commission said, we met that criteria. This is what they say. Permitting construction on a lot with unusual configurations is irrelevant. This lot has unusual configurations due to the steep streets, the lack of reasonable alternative for garage addition, and, that's, that's quoting our argument. And then the planning commission goes on to find that the lot has an unusual configuration, which I think is the criteria we're supposed to have met. However, the applicant has not demonstrated that the setback reduction is necessary for permitting construction of the proposed garage. Again, an adjudicative body can't decide they wanna go find some more rules that we couldn't find. I mean, I saw nothing in the provisions that were set forth for asking for the variance that said we had to show, that we had to eliminate all other alternative building opportunities. I, I think what, what the planning commission did here, and what it clearly did wrong, is it was in the process of doing a design review. It's not that we didn't meet the fact that it was an unusual lot requiring some consideration to build this garage, they just said, we just don't like where you're building, go build it somewhere else in your lot. They had no evidence in front of them to make that determination, except the testimony of Mr. Venata, who was the architect, the only expert who testified, and he said, can't do it. It's too steep. You know, you're talking about, I, I think the chair of the planning commission asked if we could build it so that, this is the existing garage, so that we just add it to the existing garage. That was his question, and Mr. Venata said, first of all, the whole hillside is, is, is moving on that side. In fact, up above, on the next lots, above on him lot, a house actually came off the hill, years ago. So, what is lot three and four actually slid down? So, what is, what they were, they were suggesting is that somehow we build this double drive-in garage on pillars that go down to the 15, go down 15 feet, well, go down a lot further than that, but at least go down to the, the area that's flat behind, and we somehow cantilever the garage out over that. That was the only suggestion I heard. I think what they did is they got, they got their priorities mixed up. They didn't like the garage being there. There was no substantive objection that they heard to the setback. There was one objection, which is baseless, with a property owner who owns the vacation rental above us trying to claim an easement that was established in 1946 and was extinguished in 1995 by a boundary agreement by the two owners. That was the only objection before the planning commission. So, they said we met the criteria of having an unusually shaped lot to build on. They said we oughta build it somewhere else. I don't think that's within their purview, as I read the criteria that are set for. None of the neighbors in that Pacific, Cannon, no, Center Street neighborhood objected. In fact, um, we think, and you can see on the other side of it, we will build one of these. We think this is the more logical one to build, because it leaves enough of a front space that, um, the house looks like it's done properly. But we can build it with a five-foot setback and have a cantilevered wall in order to have sufficient room at the back to handle some of the stuff we need to handle. But it was not within the purview of the planning commission to say, build it somewhere else on that lot. This is the traditional access to that lot, and it's where we should be allowed to build. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I'll have Mr. Venata talk about the building possibilities.
My name's David Beneta, you can speak in post office, box 648, Tollana Park, 97145. And, uh, I'm not sure if I can add anything other than to answer any questions you might have. And Mark, uh, I did want to just verify one detail, and that is, we, uh, did take a look at the design without a variance and with the five-foot setback, we would be allowed for the zoning code to extend our E 24 inches into that setback of five feet, I believe. So, the net difference between the variance and the no variance is just a matter of about a foot in the location of the, the finished roof, E, if you will. So, uh, I think that's, uh, pretty clearly shown on these two comparative elevations. So, the net effect, if you will, between a variance and non-variance, due to that allowed 24-inch E, uh, is essentially around a foot of distance between the end of the roof and the adjacent property, um, owned by the neighbor, of course. So, uh, hopefully that's clear. If you have any questions, I'm certainly, I'll need to answer them.
Did the planning commission get that picture, Mr. Beneta, that you just gave us?
I apologize, they did not.
The information in that picture, it certainly covers material the planning commission received in another format, but if you ask me, I judge that it's not new information, it's information the planning commission talked around and looked at on other pictures, but it's, that literal sheet of paper was not before the planning commission.
But it was explicitly stated by Mr. Beneta that the only difference is the wall, not the roof, per se?
Well, that, that's not exactly what David said, but it's close.
I know, I'm, I'm-
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was an issue-
I'm putting it in non-architectural, non-attorney, I'm putting it in city councilor language.
Yes, that was an issue that the planning commission did here, um, perhaps to a minimal extent, not based on your hearing in now, but it was not, it was on the table.
Thank you.
So, the, the unusual lot is not what's requiring the variance, because we've seen here that the garage could be built without a variance, in that left-hand picture. Yes, correct. And the historical accidents went to a building in the back, which obviously shows that that's buildable back there, so again, there was another alternative. So, the unusual lot is not driving, does not limit, uh, any by old sites except by having a variance. A variance is not required in order to build a garage there. That is actually correct. The access to the lot, and Fred, you might have to help him, was it not that postage stamp sized lot in the back, was that what that access was originally for? There's, it doesn't show on our survey, but there's actually, uh, in the plat, a extremely small, and Mark, you can confirm that, uh, probably in a neighborhood of about 100 square feet, something like that, and that lot still exists, and at 100 square feet, as certainly is not buildable, but that was the original, uh, need for that access through this- But that was the original need for that access through this portion of the lot, to a very small lot right there. I'm addressing the access, probably merely that provided access to the building behind the house that was subsequently torn down and removed.
Oh, yes.
So you can build it.
Yes, that was, yes, that's right.
David, are those two separate lots, needed separate lots?
They are.
So to build the addition garage on the existing building, does that have an easement to the L-shaped lot in order to be here? How is that?
Well, if there was a legal difference between the garage being here on a separate lot relative to the house, that's a simple lot line adjustment that could take place if necessary.
They own both lots.
Yeah, they own both lots. So the common lot, or the common line between the two lots can be dissolved.
Could be. The thing is, it isn't yet.
I don't believe so. Fred, that's correct. There's still two separate lots.
That's, you know, that's one of the things that I always have to look at is that lot, condition it in right now today, could be sold to somebody else, and then there's access to it.
It could be if the Sylvester's elected to no longer have that as open space, but they have absolutely no plans to do that. They really relish that as an amenity, and of course, they enjoy a view from their south wall across that block. So they're in no position or desirous of blocking that.
On the fire wall, what's the timeframe of the fire wall?
It's a one-hour wall. It's pretty straightforward, simple construction.
A question from Mark. The planning commission, we get a letter from the fire marshal, the fire chief, on some of the situations. I didn't see that record. I just saw a note that I think from you that you were someone to talk to the fire department?
I did talk to the fire marshal, Matt Hardman, he was with the fire department. He did indicate that a garage that close to me, a firewall, he asked me if I needed a letter, and I said, "Not yet." So we didn't get a letter.
Okay. I thought the letter said that they didn't plan to drive a truck back there.
He also, yeah, he also said that if they were fighting a fire, let's say on the side of the house away from the street, they wouldn't drive back there anyway. They'd stay down here and log their hoses back. They don't like to get their trucks near burning buildings for all the reasons you can imagine. So he wasn't using that for fire access under any circumstances, wasn't concerned if it was blocked by a drive-by, because he wouldn't be trying to drive back there anyway.
The people access, fire access.
Yeah, yeah. But he said...
I thought I was trying to understand.
Oh, okay, yeah. And he said they would never drive back there, they'd drag their hoses around the house whichever way they could.
Are there any presentations by pro comments? Are there any presentations by op comments? Just to know, Mark, these would have to be folks that have already presented to the planning commission, correct?
Yeah, if somebody spoke, wanted to speak now and would not appear to the planning commission first, I'm going to have to give some indication that they're party to this in some way. I don't know how they could.
Okay. And do you have any response to this?
There's a couple of things that were raised. I'll kind of go backwards. David asked that question about the eaves. That's correct. We allow a 24-foot, a 24-inch extension of eaves into the setback. So if your building is five feet off the property line, the eaves of that building could extend 24 inches into that five-foot space. That's built into your code. I can allow that administratively, it doesn't require a setback reduction or any action by the planning commission. Mr. Sylvester spoke about the two criteria, A3 and A4. A3 was the first one, where he talked about solar access. And he's certainly correct in asking you to interpret that more narrowly than the planning commission, but it's not a clear and objective standard. It's subjective. That's what you're asking the planning commission to do, is subjective decisions based on these criteria. And their more broad interpretation of it is certainly within their ability, their purview. You give them, the state law gives them that much authority to interpret the code in a manner that fits the requirements of the purpose of the code. Just in my view, that's not a far-fetched interpretation. Although, that doesn't mean you're bound by it. You can narrow it down in a manner that Mr. Sylvester suggested also. On A4, the second criteria, two things. One is that it's kind of a two-part criteria. The first part is the purpose of the setback is to provide a reasonable amount of privacy, drainage, light, air, noise reduction, fire safety between adjacent structures. The second part says that one or more of these conditions, A through H, must be present, and they chose the lot with the unusual configuration. The planning commission agreed the lot has an unusual configuration, this flag-shaped lot. But the first part of that is the part that drove the planning commission into sort of test that by asking about alternative locations. And that says that permitting construction on a lot with unusual configuration, the planning commission does interpret that. I think consistently, at least in my experiences, is there an alternative to your proposal, or is this setback reduction required to permit construction on a lot with unusual configuration? That's what drove them to ask about alternative locations, in my view. So I think it was not so much embarking on a design review exercise as it was sort of testing or probing to see if they really did meet criteria in E, the unusual configuration. It's not simply that you have a lot with an unusual configuration, it's that the conditions require the setback reduction to allow construction on a lot with unusual configuration. So that's what I believe the planning commission was probing and testing for. And that's a common, E is the one that often is picked, or when you're given to choose A through H, E is the one that, I guess, comes up. So it's not unusual for the planning commission to probe on that point, just to make sure that they've got a solid application in front of them if they are in approval mode, or to see if there really is a necessity, or whether the setback reduction really is necessary to meet that criteria.
I'll proponent, if there's any additional additions.
If I could just clarify a couple of things. The solar access issue seems to be incredibly broad when you are looking at solar access for a shed that's falling down. I mean, half of the sheeting on the roof is gone. It hasn't been used in the four years we've been there. As an alternative, Mr. Burden asked if I would pay to have it torn down. It just seems to be a pretty rigorous standard for trying to do what we thought was right for the neighborhood. I think the issue of alternative building blocks, and I think Commissioner Benfield pointed out that there was a building. There was a building that was built, it was two rooms, with a bathroom hanging on the back, that was built with the blocks about this large and about six places along the building. There was no foundation in the building at all. It had been built, but the top of the building, the top of the roof came down almost even with the top of the bank that's back there. So could you alternatively build in that space with an extensive amount of money? So at some point, I would think that the planning commission and this commission should look at practical building, could it possibly be done, whether the building is practical. And really, the same thing when you look at the front space of the garage. Yeah, I can probably slip a car into an eight- or nine-foot wide door, but certainly, a wider door with a little space on both sides to put the walls would be a much more reasonable way to build. And so for a reasonable garage in a reasonable location on this lot, this is the only alternative. And so if the city decides that I can't use that alternative, then what the city gets is it gets my cars and trucks in the open area next to the garage. And I think when you look at public policy, the better public policy is let's make the neighborhood look nicer. We know that there's plenty of fire access, because the fire department burned down the building next door. They did it without using that access. In fact, the south wall of our house was protected by their big nozzle truck that kept water on it all the time that they were burning. I just think you have the authority to overturn this, and I think logic should tell you that it needs to be overturned. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to start with Karen, and move forward, consideration. Would you like to read this part?
No.
Does it consider...
Yeah.
Hi, Rosen. One thing that I'm recalling from all my years on the planning commission, solar access was a common problem in that definition. It was a poorly phrased terminology, sort of a term, what is originally meant to mean in negative space, the void between buildings? How do you describe that? How do you balance what is positive and negative, the idea of designing and accepting what is meaningful? That was my take on it. Very rarely did it mean anything as defining, you know, my solar panels or solar access being direct sunlight. Real for daylight. It just meant the space between built structures. That's just a definition. It's not telling one way or the other about this specific idea. I'll start. The other thing that I remember that I always used to address, whatever the setback was, the relevance of the neighboring structures was only as a mass. You didn't look at them in the detail. In this case, the fact that the shed next to it is just a shed is pretty much irrelevant, as far as I'm concerned. So that's where I'm at at the moment.
I'm reluctant to overturn the planning commission in this case, mainly that I think it's important that we have setbacks, that they have a purpose, that if we didn't have them, in our residential neighborhoods, people would go up to the property line in many cases, without the access through, you know, not only is it a matter of safety, it's also a matter of not being right on top of it. Basically, have a 10-foot division between them instead of a 4-foot, or a 2-foot, or a 0-foot between them. So I, you know, I certainly can understand where the applicant is coming from in terms of whether they have a better-sized garage than what's supposed to be there, but I don't think that we should compromise our setbacks to allow another two or three feet in that
Particularly when they can build a garage of sufficient size, shown by their own evidence, that it doesn't even require a setback.
Again, I don't mean to sound DRB, but I think space is important. Sam addressed the idea of negative void type concept and the continuity that gives. I also had a little difficulty with why this is called a detached garage. It's really attached, isn't it? Is that just a typo?
Right, it's just a typo.
Thank you. That clarifies it. I think that's also a reason why it's important to do site visits if you can. I mean, reading the materials and then going up and seeing, and seeing what the shed looked like, which from the street end, looks like a one-car garage. I didn't look in terms of what kind of longevity it may have, but my preconceived concept of the shed was different than what I saw. So I do think it's important we uphold the planning commission.
Just looking at everything today, I understand that the two-foot and the five-foot, the firewall on one firewall not necessarily required on the other, but just even as a homeowner, to have another structure that was, you know, would be a concern. So, and we are, the planning commission, you know, holds it as a rule, so I probably would agree to that. I like the, I look the less of the setback, but just not necessarily we're looking at
I move we uphold the planning commission's decision and adopt the planning commission's finding of fact.
Counselor Benifield?
Yes.
Counselor Better?
Hi.
Counselor Higgins?
Yes.
Council President Ted Wallader?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes.
Done. We will move now to a closer special meeting. Can I call the rest session to work? You're here to pick out for some of these, Brad, do you want to introduce this?
Actually, it's going to be Mark who's introducing this. Wanted me to put it on here for her.
Well, you know, purposes agenda, this is an idea you identified early in the year as something you wanted to take up as a group, and individually, several of you have approached us and just asked questions about the program, concerns about the, what's going on in it. And it's also been, at least in the three years I've been here, we've not had any real direct feedback from you about policy, just some idea that we're steering them in the right direction here. So we want to bring this to you, outline the program to you in broad terms, tell you some of the problems that we see administrative staff on our end of the administration, and then ask you for some policy direction, and if you want some changes in the program, direct us to make those changes. First of all, I want to say that this is, this is one chapter in your zoning ordinance that is a case of inordinate amount of time and effort. Alicia Gregory, my administrative assistant, does the lion's share of work administering this program, and the program worked really well, because she does a really good job at it. Staff report was prepared while she was out on medical leave, so it's rife with some small minor errors that she would have not allowed to come to you had she been there to correct. And actually, the original schedule, I was hoping that she would come here, if she can answer these questions from my hat on the fly, and I'm going to be hard-pressed to do so. The two things that I would quickly correct that might make a difference to your discussion, the lottery, there's such one of the basically three legs of the program. I said there's 120 names on it. That's up to 150 now. And I also said that the vacation rental permits are subject to annual renewal. That's true. So are the other two kinds. All of these various kinds of permits are subject to annual renewal. The local representative question, it's true, you could be your own local representative if you live here in town or live within 10 miles of town. As a practical matter, very, very, very few of those vacation As a practical matter, very, very, very few of those vacation home rentals are self-managed. That is, the owner lives in town or near enough. Almost all of them, the vast majority are managed by somebody else, typically a management company. There's 3 or 4 of them or another individual that they know or trust here in town. So self-management is actually a kind of a rare bird in this field. To that, I had a list of 3 policy questions. The first one has to do with inspection. We're in the process of doing re-inspections right now. We're finding that 5-year loop is enough time for a lot of little changes to come in there and add up to a problem. This is not something I would have thought about, that our building official is very concerned about what he's seeing. His concerns generally revolve around this. That if this was my home or your home, and get up in the middle of the night and kind of know where all the things are that you're going to bang your head or your toes on, and if you have to walk to the bathroom in the dark, you'll probably make it. If you're visiting in Cannon Beach and you're in a strange home and you get up in the middle of the night, you don't know that there's no handrail on the stairs or that there's something you can smack your nose on halfway down the stairs. So there really is a higher standard of sort of safety associated with transient rentals than there is with a home that you or I are living in full-time or that we're renting on a longer-term basis. And that's reflected in building code, the actual class of buildings, even if it looks exactly like a single residence. The standards in building code are different for short-term rentals than they are for permanent residences. So 5-year inspection cycle, that would be one I think you should strongly consider upping, perhaps every other year, at least for a while. And if after a full cycle of these, we find that we've kind of caught up, things are back to normal, and we really aren't seeing problems, then maybe you might want to loosen it up and go to a longer interval. And I really would recommend going to a shorter interval on the inspection cycle. Because these are kind of safety things that, you know, people can get hurt on and cities can get sued on. I've had questions about whether the short-term rental program is too large. We're now up to the point where about 10% of the houses in the city are in one of the other of these programs. That means they're not available for short-term rental or not. They're not available for short-term or long-term rental or permanent occupancy unless the owner changes the course. Now, it's easy to jump to the conclusion, ah, there's the source of the supportable housing problem. I don't know if that's necessarily true, because I don't know if all 194 of those dwelling units who have converted to long-term rental or permanent occupancy. Surely wouldn't in fact. And what fraction of those might convert is an interesting theoretical question that you don't have to think about too much. But it is affecting, it has effect at 10%. That's a not insignificant fraction of our homes that are in this program now. Violations are a source of problems, and this is linked more to enforcement. We just completed the 2014 audit, or rather, we are just completing it now, sending out violation letters. Of course, we're involving Kami Hurdner, our lawyer, on that. And when she opens up the ordinance and looks at how we handle violations, she says, oh, this is completely unreasonable. We shouldn't be doing it this way. And the way our ordinance is written now, there's this kind of the 3 or 4 straight sure out approach where we send serial warning letters. And that makes sense. The problem, though, is the way we uncover violations is not long enough of a time. We cover them in batches. And the 2014 audit uncovered a large number of violations. But if all we're going to do is get to sort of the first stripe on those, it could take literally years before you actually got to the point of imposing a fine or canceling somebody's license. So I don't have a solution for how that code amendment might be. But given the sort of the nature of the industry, the way management companies have really taken over a large segment of this industry from the individual management, and just given the way we process violations and complaints here, the way it's worded now may not be the most efficient way to correct violations or infractions because we only uncover them kind of periodically. I don't mean we never uncover them otherwise, and we do get complaints. And we can find that with the vast majority, violations are uncovered in 5-year inspections or annual audits. Really, those are the 2 main methods.
Mark, is that because we don't have a building inspector?
That's a big part of it. So we contract out for that service. And Bob Mitchell, our building official, does a very good job of this. I think he's certainly conscientious about it and I think does very good work for us. But he's not a full-time building official here. And he's limited to how much he can work with those people correcting violations. So there's a certain awkwardness in how that gets corrected. If we had an in-house building official, I think some of that would go away. And then the correction process would be a lot smoother than it is now. It's, it can be pretty rough right now.
Mark, in that violation policy, more than just 1, 2, 3, it's 3 days, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Nice.
Yeah.
Like you could never, ever resolve it during a new cycle.
Yeah, it's not an easy, it's not, it's not a very straightforward enforcement mechanism. And I hesitate to say it's not because it gives too many rights to the owner versus us. That's not the point. The point is that it just takes so long to actually chase these down. And we, you know, there's some workarounds to this, but I'm not sure. I'd like to think that there's a more efficient way to do that. I don't have that in front of me. If you do pull the trigger on something like that, I'd reach out to Kami and ask her, you know, how would you correct this so that it really is easier for you to send this nasty letter that she wants sent to the people who found a violation and get to a resolution on it. The only other item that I would add to that list, and Alicia pointed this out to me, is we talk about the people who are in the permit program. There's also some people who aren't in the permit program. They're probably not also, they're probably also not paying hotel taxes. I don't know that that's a big number, but the whole point is that I really don't know. We've made some kind of sporadic attempts at monitoring websites. But it's, calling it hidden miss would be making it look like we're spending more than we are. We do very little in that direction. That's something that needs more attention. And we need a way of, we need to have the resources, staff resources to do that, and a mechanism for following through on that. And I really have no handle at all on that whole, people who are doing this sort of on the side or midnight websites that I don't even know about to rent their premises. The whole issue with, that's tied up to a related issue of resellers like Airbnb who buy blocks of your nights and resell them. And then now there's a kind of a fractional break in the room tax. If I sell 10 of my nights to Airbnb, they pay me, I pay the room tax and report that. Well, Airbnb resells those at a higher rate. Now they have to report a fraction of it, and it gets a lot more complicated than we're set up to deal with. Our ability to deal with the tax returns is fairly simple. And all of these people in the permit program, including management companies, do a good job of reporting taxes to us. When you get outside of that little circle I just described, it gets a lot more complicated. We really don't have good mechanisms for tracking those people down and enforcing our ordinance in a way that has any meaningful impact. So those are the kind of the big issues that we see. I'd be happy to try to answer any other questions on this. If you think the program's working well, it's really because Alicia does a good job of administering it. If you're just baffled by the staff report that I gave, that's my fault, not hers.
One thing I want to come on you to ask you about when we were talking under policy issues, page 3, you hypothetically laid out some things we might think about. And one was, have the short-term program grown too large? And you talked about the percentage, roughly 10%, give or take, of our total housing stock. But can you describe the fact that the vast majority of these are managed by property management? Wouldn't it be better if the denominator, if you will, was the number of second homes rather than our total housing stock?
Yeah, if you want to look at impacts on our housing stock as a whole, it's short-term rentals plus second homes.
When you make that adjustment, it cracks it up to about 20%.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd be surprised if it was as small as 20%. Yeah, it's a far bigger number. Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. It's a far bigger number than that. This is, the short-term rental program has just a share of that.
Right.
And perhaps only the biggest share.
I think the greater number is the second homeowners, looking at that number.
Yeah, and that's obviously outside the scope of anything you can do in your short-term rental ordinance.
I think through this reading through here, another thing that occurred to me is just the terminology. I know the community is very confused. I mean, we got transient housing, we have vacation housing, but then the report as well as the materials talk about short-term. And sometimes short-term includes both transient and vacation, and sometimes it's one or the other. And I think we really need to clean up the terminology that we use and try to get the community. It's going to be a tech of a job because the newspaper also needs to be sure that they're using the right term. But I think it's very confusing.
Yeah, it's taken me a long time to get my brain around this, too. The ordinance that covers all 3 programs is called the Short-Term Rental Program. Within the Short-Term Rental Program are the transient rentals that are grandfathered, the transient rentals that are approved by lottery, and the vacation home rental program. So those are the 3 subprograms that your ordinance collectively calls Short-Term Rental. But you're right, there's a lot of confusion and kind of swapping those terms back and forth, and I do it myself.
Exactly.
Because I can't keep those all straight in my mind. I write those off only because I was looking at the tax here.
The ordinance refers to motels as being transient rentals. And yet airline transient rentals outside of motel zones.
Yeah, these are in...
So it seemed to me that transient rentals in residential areas could be one of the first places to be going to not renew those lottery holders that are in the transient category if they're outside of a motel zone.
The grandfathered transient rentals are, for the most part, in motel zone.
Not all of them.
Not all of them, and the lottery ones certainly not. And the vacation home rentals almost entirely not. Those are almost entirely in residential zones.
So the transients could gradually phase out and just continue. There's nothing compels us to continue to honor a lottery. It's an ordinance, but nothing, by law, it seems to say that everybody, you know, can take a crap shot and hope for the best. So I don't understand the lottery. I guess that's, I don't understand why it's there. I don't understand why we even conduct it. And it creates transient rentals in residential neighborhoods. And I hear complaints, usually from those transient rents. Anyway, I guess I'm recommending that you take a look. Just phase out.
A lot of those houses were purchased with that. I know the one that a grandfather in, you know.
Yeah, we'd have to honor those until they're current, like current ordinance says when they're sold. What we have on recently, sold, they can choose for you.
So Mark, a question. The number of rentals is actually going down, right? Because we're not adding anymore. Some of them are grandfathered, they're getting title changes, and those that are going away. So the numbers are actually diminishing already.
On the transient rental grandfather program, yes. That's a number that will shrink over time.
But if you count all, everything together, that number is not going up.
No, it is going up. The vacation home rental program is growing. We're getting more, I should have showed you the historical roadmap.
I said 2-week, 2-week program.
Yes.
But even in the transient, when a grandfather one expires by a sale, you're keeping that number and now he's putting it in the lottery.
Well, by ordinance, the 2 of those, the sum of the transient rental grandfathered and transient rental lottery equals 92. So in theory, when something comes out of a grandfather one, because it's no, you know, they died, sold, whatever happened, it goes into the lottery programs, keeps the total at 92.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
It is not going up.
No, that's, well, the transient, the grandfathered side of it is. And we've held off doing a drawing to kind of find out what direction you want to go. But we have, I can't remember, I think a handful of them available right now under the 92 cap.
That's a good point.
Unless you change that number, 92, then that program's likely to stay the same given that there's 150 people on that, those 2 want in.
But once somebody buys a house, they're aware, you're right, like this house next to me is a where the vacation mountains, once the grandfather there, maybe you don't know which term it is that...
They can, as a new home buyer, they can find out. We don't get asked that very often. We do notify during any property opens before we approve a new application so that existing homeowners know when you convert your home to a short-term rental. There is a notice there.
Yeah, I don't think realtors routinely tell people what's going on next door.
People inquire occasionally, but not as often as I would have guessed. Some people who are buying here don't even know we have the background.
You're right. You have the option, I wouldn't even ask. But if they are in the transient pool lottery, they might let it next year. Now you do have a transient rental right next door to you that wasn't there when you bought it.
Or it might have been a vacation rental that's become a transient lottery, because I know that now.
It's just the lottery, I would assume.
Can I ask this quick question to start? Mark, how many housing units do we have?
1700, almost 1800.
And what's the distinction between a house unit and a housing unit? Do you now by definition assess it here?
No.
Okay. And that said, I would include all apartment rooms.
Yeah, include everything, multifamily, multi-family.
I looked at that city data website, and it shows 1,155 households.
Households, right.
Right, households. Dwelling units, if you add up all the little pieces, I think there's something left out. About 1,660. And of course, our population is 1,602. So when you go through that and add those up, about that 1,600, 1,700 dwelling units, 136 of them are occupied by owner, and about 280 are occupied by full-time renters. This comes up to an average of 2.1 people per...
Sounds about right.
So we go through it and then look at the second homes here. We've got all of our dwelling units, about 60% are second homes.
And that's kind of what I was keen on for, because I was looking at American Fact查, which of course is the United States Census Bureau. And if you think about our population, it's, let's just say, it's essentially 1,700. You look at the number of households, there's 760. The average household size is 2.07, which would approximately come out to the 1,700. Maybe it will last. But that is not jived very well with the number of housing units available, which would mean that a very large portion, as was just alluded to, 60% are actually second homeowners and not more occupied at this point, or resident occupied. So I think that looking at short-term rentals is a much smaller piece of the puzzle. I think some part of what drives affordability in the community is the fact that if 60% of your housing market is essentially off the market, that 40% has to serve all the people who want to live here. So that is definitely, I think, one of the major issues driving affordability and availability, obviously.
And it also goes to the other side of the coin being that program's growing.
Absolutely.
And the second homes, they are available, but participate in the twice-a-month program.
Right. And that has no restriction in terms of the number of places.
Absolutely, all participate in every, could be number of due. But with the marketing that's been done for Cannon Beach, the rents for a weekend are greater than a person that lives here can afford for a month.
Yeah, I think that's true.
And so if you rent it 2 weekends or, you know, twice a month, you can maybe make it available for residents that want to live here. But I think it's a problem. It doesn't do with the price, it just, well, it's good to be able to rent it. Make a lot more money renting by the night or, you know, twice a month. You make twice as much as you can make renting it full-time, and then still have access to it. How you overcome that? Even if you made it just once a month. It might be a wash there, but the owner loses that flexibility and that's a concern for renters.
Well, I lived on, what were I you? I was sandwiched by 2 places that weren't even a short-term rentals. They were just second homeowners. And almost every other weekend, there were people in those units with nobody monitoring or controlling. And almost every other weekend, there were people in those units with nobody monitoring or controlling, dogs barking, or at least you have a management company to call. Somebody to be accountable for homeowner that has family coming all the time. And we have that too. You know, that's another piece of it. We don't have the...
And we have a rock band rent place next door, and it wasn't any rental program at all.
We had a residence house that was sold to some group that proceeded to kick out and change around the bedrooms. And there was some religious orientation to some place, and youth would come in every weekend for retreats. And nobody was supposedly exchanging sands. I think it was donations through the church. Enforcement was, and parking was an issue. So I think we all have our horror stories.
The enforcement is an issue.
Yeah.
Brought that up. It forces neighbors to drown. Neighbors, you know, it's not a good situation.
No, you're right. With a full-time building official, I think that would be less having to rely on people to rat out their neighbors. We had a matter that came before the D O B last summer where it's unrelated to the vacation home rental program, but one of the adjoining property owners testified, and she said, "I am the only person in this block who's in the residential streets who lives here full-time. All of these other houses are either in the short-term rental program or they're home by absence. The owner is just driving her crazy that she's the person who has to kind of take on this mantle of responsibility for the whole neighborhood." Of course, she didn't have to, but it certainly wasn't the neighborhood she bargained for when she started living there. It was she was the last one there, and in the winter, she was the only one there.
Yeah, and you take a look at the purpose of this ordinance. Second one. Done it. The first purpose of this chapter is to protect the character of the city's residential neighborhoods by limiting and regulating transient rental law. And so vacation home rental law, so that's right up front, maintain the character. If you go to the comprehensive plan, it says that more and more and over and over, section after section after section, which implies that... It's not a bad... We're aware that this was a potential community changer, and so they don't want it to change. So I think it's time that we really do really look at this. But I'm not sure it's just a matter of tweaking our ordinance here.
I think they did some major tweaking, what about ten, twelve years ago? When they limited the, you know, the two weeks, and then that was interpreted differently. So that did have a huge effect on the short-term rental management, and that was put into...
Two thousand and four.
That was the attempt to sunset the lottery...
But that is when the two-week was put in. It was as part of the tweaking of that ordinance.
The vacation rental was kind of a litigation between nothing and everything. And so we had to stuff something in between. That was a long, tedious discussion on how that must work.
Council kept throwing it back to planning for another remanding, as I recall. As we talked, I think I agree completely with Council Redfield that this is more than just tweaking. And looking at the new budget coming up, a proposed budget, everybody's starting meeting. It seems to me we're talking about a building, you know, a code enforcer or something. Is there, can there, should there be some recognition of, with the fifteen, sixteen budgets, that that kind of... We're talking about a person's power, I mean, to do whatever we're gonna do in terms of tweaking it. Does the proposed budget show that kind of flexibility, or is it too late to do that?
No, the budget looks similar only because we have to see if the position's being approved. But the amount of money in the building official's fund is more than adequate to hire a position. And what we're proposing is three days a week, eight hours each day, so twenty-four hours a week, having a building official who would also be the code enforcement officer.
That's what I was gonna ask about code enforcement, because before that's been the P D has that.
That's correct, and we don't really have that function anymore. So Jason serves, or sorry, Chief Skirmour serves as our quasi-code enforcer at times. So it really is something, I think, that goes beyond just the housing issue, property maintenance as well, and things like that.
So three days a week, we do both the building plus the former code enforcer type position?
That is significantly more time than we get currently with our contract with C S I.
Question, how much time is our current contract we're putting in?
We're estimating ten hours a week.
This conversation is far from new. In fact, I have flashbacks about where we had discussed this before and kind of in response to Mike here, more widely of grandfathering. And I recall the ordinance in the past is that this community has forever been a second homeowner community and a place where people came for vacation, and people came to rent places that they didn't own. So our history is in that. We are, our comprehensive plan came way after this town was established as a place to come for vacation or getaways. So the comprehensive plan was, I think, an attempt to try to offset some of that natural use of homes in K and H. But I think that, you know, that's... It's fighting against the wind. I mean, I don't think, you know, that we can expect to turn this town into a residential community where we don't have people coming here for second homes. It's the nature of where we live.
I don't think that.
I'm talking about second homes and grandfathering, just on those that had transient rentals at the time the ordinance was enacted. That's only grandfathered. I understand that. But to continue to maintain a number and let people play Powerball, win the lottery, I don't understand what compels the city to continue to maintain... I don't know how many are now in the lottery, but eight or fifty, I'm not sure what it is. Why would it maintain that? They still had the option to be second home or vacation home rental participants, like anybody else that didn't have the good fortune to win a lottery. I think they ought to be on the same level and not have some super class that wins a lottery and can keep it for five years. I don't understand the purpose of that at all.
Well, to me, one purpose would be that if you took it away totally, that would be incentive for people to do it. You know, hit, to do it, you know. They're doing it anyway, but it would be more incentive, because now nobody would have the opportunity. There wouldn't even be the chance that you could, you know, have that opportunity in the future. So I think that it would only worsen the problem of trying to control things.
And it was a compromise at the time that we had that hearing. They would continue with the lottery, there was one that they were gonna keep, because they were gonna grow the lottery. And then they also changed that to the fourteen-day, and then that was interpreted differently.
You know, again, if you're in a motel zone, you win a lottery, that's fine. You're in the rock proper zone. If you have transient motel rentals in the residential neighborhood, just... Nobody would want that next door then. It's awful, in the summertime particularly. And they're just encouraging everybody, saying, "Okay, keep handing them out, handing them out." And what, for what reason? Whatever the reason it might have been when this was enacted, probably was a compromise, you know, was to get things in place. But it moved beyond that. Back then, people had to hand it out and rent it. Now, you go online and you're in motel zones.
I think, to me, the fact that it is at ten percent, when I read the ordinance to protect the character of the city's residential by limiting, I think ten percent is a good number. Or a limited number. If you try to figure out, what if you were to pick a, how many out of seventeen hundred homes would you say would be a good number to limit to? Ten percent's a nice number to limit to. That also being true for the comprehensive plan. To me, I think that's still like the balance that we have to always maintain. I think the magic, ninety-two, I can't say, I remember why it was ninety-two. I think that's how many there were at the time.
That's how many were left.
How many were left. And then a few that got grandfathered, which is filled in the residential lottery act.
I think so, Sam, because there were a couple of times they tried to sunset that ninety, putting in with a double-tiered resident.
Well, originally, there were a hundred and four. Forty of them left the program, and then twenty-eight came back in. So that left ninety-two.
And then somewhere along the road, they created the vacation rental home. So I suppose that kind of filled in the fact that we're keeping the homes good for the ten percent.
I... I guess that question, the ten percent, I thought we decided it was more like twenty, because we're looking at not the total housing unit, but because we do need some full-time residents here. We're looking at the second homeowners, and the percentage of that was more like twenty percent.
I guess I'm just looking at the short-term rental portion of the housing problem. That was what I was suspecting you were talking about tonight, just short-term rentals.
When you say short-term rental?
The three categories.
All three combined.
The short-term rental category, and then you start filling in after that what's the second homes.
Well, I don't...
No, that's not...
I don't understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't either.
The three categories, as I understood it, transient rental, grandfathered transient rental lottery, and vacation home rental create the ten percent of the housing.
Of the total housing.
That is used in the short-term rental aspect.
But Mark mentioned that of the short-term rentals, almost none of them have an owner on premise or even overseeing it. So it seemed to me, rather than looking at the total housing stock, you need to look at, again, the end being the number of second homeowners, because it's second homeowners who are the owners of the short-term rentals.
I mean, second homeowner could be a second homeowner, but it's not short-term renting his place out. That's right.
Exactly. But of the totals, short-term homeowners, twenty percent of them are, when you look at the number that are being short-term rentals. It's not of the total communities, it's of the total second homeowners from what Mark imported, because many people aren't here. Is it... Is that what you're... Am I articulating it according to what Judge James said?
I don't think that we're gonna be able to stop people from using their homes in the way they choose to use them. If they don't like our ordinance, they're just gonna do what they want to do. I think it's better that we have things to control things, and we give them opportunities. We license and we collect taxes and we give inspections rather than the alternative. And that's, I just, I don't see that you're gonna tell, "These people are not gonna do it." If we say they can't do it, they're still gonna do it, because it's just the nature of this town. You can't fill this town with residents. You're just giving out on that this is a some town.
But we have a code enforcer.
Well, I think the building sector is important, and we have the system.
The F T E to do this code enforcement and to check the listings. I mean, we're not just...
I've been living here a long time, and, you know, I haven't, I've heard complaints from people. I mean, I'm sure, you know, there's complaints about everything and anything, if you look around or listen long enough. I have not seen a problem personally, and this is not to the point where I think we should try and shut it out. Granted, there are disrespectful people born every day who don't act properly, you know, in public or when they go places. But ninety-some percent of the people are respectful of our community, are respectful of our ordinances. They come here, they don't leave garbage out, you know, they don't do the things that the small percentage of people might do.
Something I'm trying to do is shut it down. We said shut it down, saying we need to regulate it, monitor it, make sure it's properly maintained. You say leave your garbage out, I can't tell you how many times I've picked up somebody's garbage over here. I wouldn't say I've picked it up, except some full-time resident that doesn't like to see it.
I think that's another thing we can hear from staff. I hear about how often the garbage has to be cleaned out in the city because so many people are dumping their kind of household waste. The people that we subcontract with, can you address that problem or...
Yeah, there is, we do have, we do require residential rentals to have regular garbage service. But particularly the unregulated end of the market, people dispose of their trash where they can dispose of it. And that sometimes ends up in public containers, so we order our sharers crap trash. How much of that results from, you know, by our good coal mills, as I can imagine, it's a huge part of it. But it's, we spend a lot of time and money moving trash in this town for a town of seventeen hundred people.
I manage a hotel, and I have people in the neighborhood who are residents, use our trash. So it's not just...
Full-time residents.
Same time, same age, chamber of people, made users and stuff, so it's just...
Yeah, and that may just be a factor.
I think that my neighbor's trash from the seagull, they're gonna help get it, not just...
We do make an effort to make sure that the short-remals in the program have trash collection. They have to provide verification that they're, they have a contract with western origin waste. So we tie that down as tightly as we can. I'm not saying there are problems with that in the program, but I think we've got a reasonable handle on that.
I think we have some very, some great vacation rental companies in town that also monitor. I know, excuse myself, but it'll tell how many people in the room. And we have a force there making sure we're coming down, if that house holds ten, it's a fire code. I'm sorry, can't have fifteen in that house, you know, those type things. And I know just people in the audience, I know that we monitor that stuff, because we also have fire code.
And we have a good relationship with the companies that manage the rooms in town. I'm certainly the one to apply otherwise. They're great people to work with. And I think they run very good, very good programs for their clients, and that's generally not the source of problems.
Of the system, when it was originated, that was not available. And now that it is, really fills the void of the continuity problem and having somebody to talk to. I'd like to get this back around to the couple of specific questions that Mark had. The five-year time freeze, I think is something we should enact as soon as possible to adjust that. Maybe when we do their building sector, we change it at that point. Use the new, in fact, with any person in place to start acting it.
Can I address that? I agree that five years is probably too long, but I'm not sure when you do two years, now it suggests three years. If that's not enough, we go back to two years, once again, just to minimize the amount of time and effort and expense to the city.
And I'm recommending actually annually. And the reason, the reason why is, is we had a lot of experience with rental inspections back home in Pennsylvania. And one of the things we discovered is that the things that, first of all, smoke detectors, carbon dioxide detectors, the first things that get disabled, and then fire extinguishers go out of date. And so the most basic life safety things were the first things that kind of went to the wayside. And so those annual inspections at least ensure that those things were kept somewhat up to date. I think anything less than five years is beneficial, but just so you know, I'm kind of on the opposite extreme of the five years.
There's a loss facility, is the city liable for...
Well, Tammy, I heard her version was, you know, somebody, Jefferson falls down a non-code compliance stairs. They're gonna sue everybody. We get to sort it out with the homeowner and the management company. But yeah, we licensed it, we inspected it, and there's some code of compliance problem, we're certainly gonna own a piece of that.
Are even better if you done it annually rather than through five years.
Yeah, probably.
But those kind of things, though, they're not gonna go away. I think the rails are probably not going to go away. We just have to make sure that the initial inspection is, you know, as good as it can possibly be so that nothing is wrong from the get-go. Granted, you know, fire extinguishers are going to go out, you know, smoke alarms are going to, batteries are going to go dead, so.
But isn't that something, I mean, I know for me, we change all that out every year, but I would think that a vacation rental company would have that on their checklist for their, like when you're doing your deep cleaning, you have annual things, is there a way to report that, that that's being done?
You know, we can add that to the audit, I suppose. I, I think you're right. I think the, the professionally managed units, generally they do those things. They change the batteries and the smoke detectors and make sure the doors lock and unlock properly.
I mean, I think that they have to have, annually I have to have those things inspected by a hotel, I have to have smoke detectors, this, the fire extinguishers every year have to be, you know, that we don't have, they don't have to do that for a rental company?
No, we don't, we don't have a self-inspection checklist that we require. And there are cities, I can't reference Seaside or Manzanita that does something along those lines with their annual report. You have to fill out, have your maintenance person fill out that checklist that would have those things, change the batteries and the smoke detectors, check that the fire head is still charged, make sure all the doors lock and unlock, make sure lights work. Yeah, we could do something like that.
Do you probably already do that, just going to do an annual?
Well, they may well do it themselves, there's no reporting requirement now.
You know, with the professionally managed units, there are many fewer problems. With those that merely give you the name, the phone number, it's got to be posted by the door, somebody within ten miles.
I think they.
They, it's not somebody that's really managing, it's just somebody called or something.
It's an emergency call, you know, complaint line. And we think that's good, that there is somebody we can get hold of in an emergency, but it's not, it's not the full package, you're right.
It's not like calling the company, it's calling somebody to open their home. And that they're not on vacation and that they, they don't live out on Highway twenty-six and if you get around, you're coming into addressing the problem by that time with the nuisance and the mortgage. Some benefit, I think, of having professional management for any of these commercial investment rental properties. I think that's a condition that should be least considered, they require professional management, not just a phone number of somebody ten miles away.
Brandon, what does the audit show in terms of professional management versus the person ten miles away?
I don't know. The, the, certainly the, more than three-quarters of them are managed by a company that we recognize. You know, there's three or four local companies that do this and then one out-of-town company that does a lot of things. That covers most of the rentals. The, there, the ones that are not professionally managed that are, have a local contact who's somebody who happens to live here are a fairly small subset of that. I'm going to guess in the ten to twenty percent range, but I don't, don't ink that in yet because I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Is Casa local?
The Casa? They're actually based in Portland area, but they do have an office in Seaside, so they meet our qualification as local. We require that they have a physical presence within ten miles of Cana Beach, so that gets us up to Seaside. And I believe their office is in Seaside.
Brandon, as questions have come to your attention from our contracted building inspector, are those problems the non-professionally property managed homes? Or is it a mix? Or can you?
I can't really speak to, there's an issue with the unit itself. What I think it is, is that the violations that we find as far as too many rentals within a certain amount of time are much more likely to be from a sort of internet-based or, or, you know, large type thing. Yeah, the Casa type thing. You're not seeing those violations. As far as the homes themselves, so the code violations, it's all over place, it could be any of them. And, you know, I think it's important to recognize that when we discover these things, we, we do have an obligation to repair it at that point in time. I mean, the self, the, the life safety issues, I would say. It's no fault of the vacation rental place per se, but at that point in time, even mistakes we've made in the past, we can't let them go today. So we really are trying to address these. And I think that's what we're starting to discover, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're finding a lot of code violations in these rentals. And that's one of the reasons why we really want to go to a more frequent inspection basis, at least for the time being, to get these things up to code as fast as possible. Because it's more by luck that no one's been hurt than, than, you know, than you know other reason, I think.
So if a code violation is found, then the professional property manager is contacted if in fact it's a home that's being professionally managed?
We contact both the manager and the owner.
Or whoever the name of.
Right.
The local contact person plus the owner, both are contacted.
Both are contacted.
Do you see, so they have a different set of standards for their vacation rentals? Like a little bit flawed when it comes to Cana Beach? Or is it?
No, the building code standards are the same. Some of their procedures are different, they have kind of different checklists than we do, they have, it's a few different ways they do procedures, but no, their codes are exactly the same.
Are there any, is there, is there any flexibility in the way the code enforcement officer can work with a homeowner or manager to address the code problems?
Not a lot. There's, there's some, you know, sometimes there's problems that have multiple solutions and, you know, the, the building official can say, look, you, we've dealt with one recently where the, there was a front core step that was uneven, you have to have even risers. And he said, there's several different ways you could solve this, you could rebuild all the steps, you can expand this bottom into a landing. So the, the building official will work with people on those kind of structural corrections. Because typically on these older homes especially, there's, there's multiple ways you can bring this into compliance. And our building official will work with those people to identify the one that will work well for them. But, you know, in terms of ignoring some of those things, no, not much flexibility at that end. I mean, there's definitely the knowledge that you're dealing with older homes here, so they're not, you know, they're built in nineteen forty and they, you know, almost nothing about them meets current codes. We're not going back into history and trying to bring all those violations forward. We're really only focusing on the health, safety violations that affect that, kind of the difference between long-term residents and short-term residents. The ones that happen all the time are uneven stairs, missing railings, low head height, lack of safety glass in places where it needs to be, lack of adequate access, things like that. They're often correctable, but they're, they're, you know, there's sort of symptoms of an older housing stock that we have.
I think it's important too, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's kind of my, my problem, this is a personal thing. Because if I were going somewhere and I found out that I lived in maybe some of the cabins up there, the better ones are the older ones, they're kind of funky. So, you know, that's just a personal choice. But, you know, if somebody's kind of coming to coast and looking for a beach cabin, they want something that's beach cabin-y, that might not have the headroom in the attic sleeping space, that might not have the railing.
I think the important thing to recognize though is, is that these codes are only enforced when those people decide to turn their home to a business. If that was still a private residence, those issues wouldn't need to be addressed at that.
I'm saying as a renter, that would be my preference. Finding that little guy that is funky. And maybe in that case, I'm going to Airbnb to find that one rather than going through one of the management companies here in town or something like that. That's just a, a, I know it's not solvable. That's one of those things.
Grant makes a point though, you're running a business, it's a commercial enterprise, there's a different standard in your own private home where you know all these funky details, so.
If you're a city that slices, you're running a professional city, it's a lawsuit, I mean.
It's understandable, but it's too bad.
I assure you that no life safety hazards go on, you know, we're mediated, we do. We, we take away their license if they do not correct the problem.
After the sixth time.
And that, no, that's not on the way to the system.
Well, and I, this is a very awkward conversation we have a lot of times with these inspection failures is, you know, you know, I inspect something today, there's a failure, and I tell the owner and the manager, you can't rent this until this is corrected. The manager's just going, but I've got a rental, look this weekend. I'm saying, I can't allow you to rent that until this is corrected. Many times these can be corrected really quick and people are obviously very motivated to get that done quickly. And we accommodate them by doing the reinspection just as quickly as they can get the work done. But it doesn't, it's not always seamless in terms of them running their business. These inspections happen when we can get them scheduled. So it's, there's definitely some hardship in tense moments when we do these.
So when you have a violation, the first one is just a notification kind of thing. Is there a timeline then that is set before you do another inspection? Well, how that works?
Typically the, we aren't handling the inspections as violations unless we have somebody who just completely someone balls us. Typically they say, this, this is an infraction you, you need to fix. And the conversation almost always is, great, let's get this fixed. And so we don't cite anybody on a violation in that case. We just write the report, they make the corrections, we re-inspect it if we need to, and they're back in business and there's no citation there. Because none of these are willful egregious violations. I mean, nobody goes out there, obviously I don't think so, deliberately moving a fire extinguisher around and then taking it out of the house as soon as we've seen it. So these are all things that are, I, I don't think intentional. So we don't cite people on those and find them or give them that for strike on any of these. Because almost all of them just want to correct them and get back in the business and that's what we want to see too.
What if I have a violation of maybe too many people on one building?
That's a different matter. And that, that will come up either through complaints from neighbors or complaints from the police department if it gets that far, or through the audit. And that, I guess that other issue I mentioned about is that we don't find these singly, we find them typically in the audit. There's a provision in the code that says, for instance, each day of the violation is a separate violation. So at the annual audit, I can flip to the violation and say, well, there's a day one, two, three, four, five and six, right there, I can tick off all, but not send any warning letters on any of those. So it's not at all clear whether you could use that tool, the way I just described it, as a mechanism for voiding out somebody's license. Maybe that's just the first warning letter. And that's kind of the way Tammy's looking to handle this two thousand and fourteen violations, that, you know, there's some serious violations, but we're not, hopefully not going to have to cancel anybody's license because, and hopefully get some better compliance in the next cycle and put them on a shorter leash and see if we can bring them back into the program in a compliant fashion. It's mostly because it's just impossible for us to keep on top of these on a frequent enough basis to make that periodic letters program an effective enforcement.
It's a fairly complex issue and it's the first time it's been revisited as we talked about initially for years. I would hope some of the things we've talked about today will come back to us in a fairly short time and we can look at some draft proposals or some, in terms of the budget, we can all be cognizant of it when we're sitting on the budget committee, the importance of this position and what it might be doing. But I hope this isn't the end for the next five years.
Well, as we, as we go into get this audit kind of under control and maybe bring in this building official that's going to do a little better inspection program, I guess I'd ask that, that we do bring this back to you in the next, sometime this summer, some more detailed information on parts of this that I didn't, didn't, don't have enough familiarity with, answer some of the questions you raised and perhaps provide some more concrete suggestions for program changes.
And get some more time maybe on how frequent these inspections should be done. I mean, we're hearing it's between one and five years, it's a pretty wide range without even holding with counsel about their presence.
Is there a timeline yet on one building?
Hopefully July one, but I don't think that's going to happen. But the arguments, I am going to start the advertising process next month. So I am really trying to have that person on board for July first. Being warned that's going to be hard to find someone, so.
Do we have a contract that's beyond thirty days with Seaside?
Sixty days.
Thank you.
To me, that's a big step.
Does anyone have any last ideas before we?
I had something further to your order.
Just go to that.
I recently attended the Business Emergency Repairist meeting with Stacy Burr. And something came up in that meeting that I was not aware of, and I never heard this before in all of our discussions, that's the worst-case scenario is, you know, that we have this monster wait the last five or six minutes. Twenty minutes later, we have this series of waves that come in, pretty much wipe the town out, take, take out a good portion of all the buildings that are, you know, very, very much above, below fifty to seventy-five feet in height. And, and we're going to lose, according to the judge, we're going to lose some of our oceanfront. So the question came up about replating the town and, and what happens to those oceanfront lots? Do those people actually lose their property? Or do you, or do you push everybody up the hill to where, you know, there's, there's how, there's people now on the oceanfront still have the front houses? And according, according to Stacy, those people don't lose their property. That you actually, you do push up the hill, you push people back, you replat the town. So something we haven't done on this level, this housing level or on our planning level, is to have a plat for this town once we get to the other side of something like this. And it's something that would be very important. I think that people knowing ahead of time about that, you know, having this kind of security, what the town is going to look like later, may or may not affect people's desire to be here in the first place or the desire to stay here after an event such as this. That's going to be one of our major challenges, is after an event like this, we have the resources to put this town back together. And if we have a plan ahead of time, a plot of how the town will look later, I think we're more inclined to have people stay here and work in that plan than if we don't.
I have just a little history on this. Two thousand and seven, two thousand and six, somewhere back in that ancient time period. There was a committee, the city council established the recovery committee. That was the main question for that committee. They met for a good part of a year and realized they couldn't all answer that question. Since then, I have talked to officials from the L C D, they can't answer that question. They are trying to figure out what to do when there is no more land that people's own, that's on, they don't know what to do with it. Their current, Mark brought it back this up a little bit, the land, where land use zoning would not allow us to move everybody back to zoning state. So we would have to go into an endlessly difficult time of trying to take forest land and turn it into a new town, which probably would happen.
According to Stacy, anybody whose, whose home continues to exist, you couldn't ask them to move out of their home, to, to move. So, which means you can't just push everybody up the hill because there's going to be homes that will be attacked and those people cannot be asked to leave their home.
The other thing that is intriguing is the, the land that would be in Downham area when it subsides, in fact, you still own the land. It's now just underwater and it's on a wetland now. Not only, wouldn't be oceanfront, it would be a wetland, which you can't rebuild anymore. So you would own the land, but you would not be suddenly built.
Is that why you have interns?
Age question, it's good to know that Stacy's trying to.
I just wanted to mention, we have a primary election coming up, May seventeenth, and our municipal judge is one of the judges running for, is a candidate for the new, for the vacancy in the circuit court. And if you're interested in making an informed decision, I mean, he's our judge, he's our employee, I suggest you sit in on one of his unique courts, if there's one between now and May seventeenth, because I'm not making a theory there about for a contract, I think that's a way to, I mean, an informed voter to find out what kind of judge, role you would be. He's been our municipal judge for two to four years now. He's all of the municipal.
Which is the judge we're losing?
Nelson is retired.
Nelson?
I'd just like to ask, has everybody seen related editions of this? Yeah, I brought a couple that you can read it. I actually reviewed it a little bit. But there, there are several articles in there that I think are very interesting and timely.
But there are several articles in there, I think, that are very interesting and timely, the kind of things we're talking about. Have you seen them?
We're taking it to the affordable housing group, huh?
Yeah, affordable housing.
They'll get caught, huh?
You can keep that.
I already have it.
Oh, you have it, let me... I would just like to mention the fact that Get Lit was last weekend, I think it went amazingly well. It did more than I did, actually, didn't it? So it was, uh...
Did you stand as lit as you want to do it?
I did as well, if you love attended over at the dinner, so that was fun. It's a good event for the town. Anything else? We are returning.